Good evening. I'm going to open the October 22, 2024, meeting of the Gloucester City Council. If you will all stand to join us in the flag salute, led by Councilor Benson.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I would like to introduce the city councilors who are here this evening. Ward one councillor Scott Memard, councillor at large Jeff Worthley, ward three councillor Marjorie Grace, councillor at large Jason Groh, council vice president and ward five councillor Sean Nolan, ward four councillor Frank Majorta, councillor at large Valerie Gilman, and ward two councillor Dylan Benson. We also have our city clerk here this evening, Grace Poyer, our assistant city clerk Danielle Argentino, and we have the C A O in the audience tonight, Jill Cahill. We also have our building commissioner, Rob Vacari. Sorry, Rob. And let's see who is online. Oh, and I'm Tony Gross, President of the City Councilor at Large. And let's see who we have. Hey, we don't have anybody online. That's all right. She's just a lawyer.
Hi, Pam.
In the best possible way.
Yes. So this is a public meeting of the Gloucester City Council, is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and public hearings to be recognized to speak. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the City Council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minutes shall note the interruption. It is the finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. And now we will go right into oral communications. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communication shall allow any resident and/or property owner and/or business owner who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council. Make their statement without debate, and the City Council will refer matters to the office of the mayor. Person speaking under oral communications shall be limited to three minutes each. And do we have anyone in the audience who would like to speak under oral communications? Step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gail Goodyou. I'm at 25 Ferry Street in Gloucester. Good evening. I am here again to speak about the lack of railings at the O'Malley Rink. I was here previously on March 12, 2024, and presented these concerns about the safety of the rinks, bleachers. The safety of the rink. On March 20, I received in the mail a letter from Mayor Greg Virga. I would like to read a small paragraph of that response from him. He said, "I appreciate you raising this concern and have checked into the Department of Public Works on this suggestion." I am happy to report that the Department of Public Work has been planning for this, and railings are scheduled to be installed at Talbot Rink this coming summer, which was this past summer. I believe when someone, especially a mayor, that the work would be done this past summer. And I was so disappointed and not able to understand when I went to the rink early September to see if the railings were up. No work was done or completed as they promised. Next day, I immediately called the mayor's office on September 3 and left another message, and then had to call again. I didn't get any response. Finally, on September 13, I received a call from the mayor's office. They informed me that they needed to speak to the D P W director, Mike Hale, and he was on vacation and would call me the following week after talking to the D P W director. I waited patiently. Finally, a call from the mayor's office and was told they did not know when the railings would be installed, and they will call me when this would be done. I am so sad at how this was handled, and I do not have trust to the people who are supposed to take care of this. Hockey season is starting soon, and maybe all should be worried if someone falls up or down those bleachers and gets hurt at this rink. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Hello? City council members.
Name and address for the.
Yeah, name and address first, that's true. Peter Johnson, 33 Middle Street, Gloucester, Massachusetts. And I, as you probably all know, that I'm opposed to the proposed development on 20 Main Street. And I know, you know, it's coming up for you soon. So I just want to mention something that's kind of been on mine. I've been told a couple of times, you know, been said that if there was a commercial development on that property, they wouldn't have to ask for any special permits or anything like that, basically could do whatever they want. I don't know about the merits about that, but I guess the general message is that, you know, you should be happy that it's not commercial development that's going on there and that basically, you know, be happy that a special permit been asked and stop complaining about it that I kind of feel is the message about saying that. So, but there's not, they're not actually asking for, or they're not actually going to develop a commercial building, anything like that. They are mixed-use residential building that's proposed, and they are asking for special permits or several special permits for it. So whether or not what could happen there as a commercial building is not really relevant. But still, I'm going to entertain the idea because it says a little bit about what's going to come up there. If it was a commercial development that's going to come up there, I just wonder what it would be. The proposed building that's there is a four-story building. I have the dimensions here. I forgot my glasses. I can't read them, but it's a very big, it's a big building, as big or bigger than the Blackburn Building next to it. So if there was going to be a commercial building, what would be? Like, would be a mall? Fishmeal factory, plant? What would be? I mean, the point of me saying is just like, even if they did commercial, like, this is a huge, huge building, and I don't even know what that commercial building would, commercial use would be if someone wanted to put it commercial. And instead, like I said, this is a big building, and it is not, the size of it is much bigger than anything else that's going to, is on Main Street, on North of Main Street.
10 seconds, Peter.
Okay, so the question is, you know, what is, how are you going to look at this? And what kind of benefits would the community get from this? And that's, I have more written down. As you can take and read what I wanted to say more, but also thank you.
Anyone else in the auditorium who would like to speak under oral communications? Name and address.
Beverly Palmachi, 8 Commonwealth Avenue in Gloucester. I'm here to express my concern regarding the proposed project at 20 Main Street. I question why the Z B A approved such a large building to be erected eight inches from the retaining wall of the abutters to the rear on Middle Street. How would this not be a safety violation regarding maintenance and in particular access if there were to be a fire? It is particularly concerning that not all abutters were notified, yet many who signed letters in favor of the project are tenants of this developer at the rebuilt version of the Lorraine Apartments, a building in which no way abuts 20 Main Street. To my knowledge, this developer owned the original Lorraine Apartments, built at the time of the conflagration that took the life of one person, affected many others who were displaced, and destroyed the temple on Middle Street. As I recall, the fire department had claimed the Lorraine a fire trap and made suggestions regarding safety devices. One would think the developer would be especially sensitive to the possibility of fire regarding any new projects. The developer's lawyer stated that she was submitting Plan B subdivision, presumably should the first plan not be approved. I assume Plan B allowed the proper setbacks required by existing zoning regulations. If so, why was that safer plan not explored? Should it contain fewer units than Plan A, all the better, as it would help to alleviate issues that come with the burden of more density? Please carefully assess the impact on actual abutters and consider the potential impact of the project on the integrity of the retaining wall regarding safety and property values. The well-being of existing community members should be prioritized. The safety of the citizens is the first priority of government, and in this case, city government, city citizens.
Thank you. We are making an exception this evening because this is actually on the agenda. So I just wanted you to be aware that maybe next time we won't be taking testimony on this. It's coming for a public hearing shortly thereafter. Anyone else in the auditorium? Name and address.
Hello? Hi, Peter Canavaro, 103 Essex Ave. I'm here to talk to you about a situation that we have over at Magnolia Woods. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Fisherman Soccer Program. And many members of Magnolia Woods, let me start over. I'm here today on behalf of the Fisherman Soccer Program and many members of Magnolia Woods community to express our deep concerns about the proposal to install a pickleball court at Magnolia Woods. I kindly like to address some concerns, some regarding safety. First and foremost, the parking situation at Magnolia Woods is already insufficient, and adding a facility like a pickleball court would further exacerbate the congestion and create significant safety risks. As it stands, the area can barely accommodate one lane of traffic. This would make it extremely difficult for first responders to access in the event of an emergency. We try our best to email parents about parking. With minimal signage, it can make it a challenge, it makes it challenging for people to get the message. The Fisherman Soccer Program serves up to 600 children in our community during our seizing, offering them a safe and structured environment for physical activity and personal growth. This program has become an integral part of the community, and any changes to the current use of Magnolia Woods would be detrimental to the program. We have collaborated with the D P W to maintain a natural beauty and functionality of the field and surrounding woods, and we believe this is important to preserve the space as it is. We understand the pickleball community is growing, and we would like to work together to find a more suitable location for the new court. However, Magnolia Woods is not the right choice. There are several other viable locations in the city that would better suit the needs of both pickleball players and the community. Some examples might be Stage Four Park near the volleyball court. The area seems to be underutilized. Additionally, with the recent closure of East Gloucester School, there's a potential open space in that area that could be developed for pickleball courts. We also believe that spending nearly $50,000 of taxpayer money on a feasibility study is unnecessary. Instead, these funds could be better used to maintain the current field and conditions at Magnolia Woods and other existing recreational spaces. We encourage the council to consider these alternative locations and allocate resources for more efficiency. In closing, while we support the growth of recreational activities like pickleball, we urge you to reconsider Magnolia Woods as a potential site. Doing so, doing so would protect the safety of the community and vitality of the Fisherman Soccer Program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else in the auditorium who would like to speak? Step right up. Name and address for the record, please. Thanks. I don't think that's on, and we need to.
Nope. Judy Fleck at 977 Washington Street. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Fisherman Youth Soccer and the over 600 children we serve annually. As a lifelong resident of Gloucester and president of Fisherman Youth Soccer, I have seen firsthand how important spaces like Magnolia Woods are for the children and families of the city. It's been a cornerstone of our program, providing a safe and accessible space where our kids can develop not only their soccer skills, but also a sense of teamwork, discipline, and community. We are incredibly grateful for the designated space at Magnolia Woods that has allowed our program to grow and flourish. The city's commitment to preserving this area for youth sports has had a profound impact on the over 600 children who participate in our program each year. Families across the city rely on this field for their kids to engage in practices, games, and clinics. It's a space where they learn soccer skills, teamwork, and discipline while building lifelong friendships. Each year, we welcome hundreds of kids to Magnolia Woods from ages four to 14. While we are deeply grateful for the use of Magnolia Woods, we do have some concerns about its future capacity to serve our program if additional activities or developments were to be introduced. It's important to note that there are several other open spaces in Gloucester that could be suitable for pickleball, such as Stage Four Park, where recreational activities can flourish without compromising the safety and accessibility of existing programs, or perhaps the East Gloucester School site. We urge the City of Gloucester to consider these alternatives, which would allow for the growth of pickleball without the unintended consequences of overcrowding Magnolia Woods. We currently stagger our program times to accommodate parking needs, but parking is still very limited, especially during peak times on Saturday and busy practice days. If other programs or facilities were added to the space, the strain on parking and traffic could escalate to a point where it becomes a significant safety concern. Limited parking spots could lead to congestion with families parking along the road or in undesigned areas, increasing the risk of accidents. This would create potentially a dangerous situation, especially for our young players. Additionally, increased activity in the area could impact emergency access, creating further safety risks for everyone who uses Magnolia Woods. I urge you all to recognize the significant impact that Magnolia Woods has on our community. With over 600 children participating annually, our program relies heavily on having sufficient field space to accommodate our growing demand. Losing access or reducing space at Magnolia Woods, whether through new development or other projects, would be a setback not only for Fisherman Youth Soccer, but for the entire city. We understand that the city has competing interests when it comes to land use, but we ask that you consider the long-term benefits of keeping Magnolia Woods as a dedicated space for youth activities. In a time when community and outdoor activities are more important than ever, let's prioritize spaces.
Second, Judy.
That foster connection, health, and development for our youngest residents, let's continue to prioritize the spaces that benefit Gloucester's youth while ensuring that any future changes to Magnolia Woods do not create any hazards. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have, if you have testimony you want to leave? Oh, it's on your phone. Okay. Anyone else in the auditorium who would like to speak at oral communications? Seeing none, we have one online. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Joel Havaza, 28 Middle Street. I'm just calling in regards to what I heard was a successful petition drive to put the 3A measure on a ballot. And I'm sure this council and the administration are going to do everything they can to help avoid monetary losses as a result of this. One humble suggestion would be during the process, there were certain iterations of the plan that would be basically paper compliance, where it complied with the letter of the law for 3A, but in reality would really generate almost no housing. And I'm curious if detente could be established between the administration and those who are against 3A and heading up these petitions, where the City Council could hold public hearings at a quicker schedule, get a paper compliance version of 3A passed on the books in time, and then the more substantial 3A ordinance that was originally passed could work its way through the process that is being forced upon us. Again, I'm not looking to end run around the democratic process. The petition is what the petition is, like it or hate it. But if there's a way the City Council could schedule some personal time to get some unscheduled meetings on the books and get a paper compliance version approved, I think it would be great for the city to avoid the financial consequence of the petition, regardless of the merits, one way or the other, on the argument. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, there's no one else. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Presentations, a presentation regarding the Good Energy Community Electricity Aggregation.
Good evening, Mr. President, and through you to the councilors. Jill Cahill, Chief Administrative Officer for Mayor Greg Virga. I'm here tonight to introduce to you our partners at Good Energy. This is, I think, our third go-around with the energy aggregation. We are thrilled to be partnering with them, and they're going to share with you the information that you need. But I just want to make sure everyone knows here, councilors, if you need additional information, there is a website which she will share with you, as well as if you have constituents that are looking for additional information, website is a great resource. But our community development team is always available to answer questions as well. So with us tonight, we have Stephen D. Natale from Good Energy right over here, and we have John O'Rourke from Good Energy. This has been here a few times now in Gloucester, and Rachel Ferdinand, who will be doing the presentation tonight. So I hand it over to you, Rachel.
Thank you. Let me see if I can just make sure my screen aired. Oh, no. Sorry, my computer just decided to stop working. Yeah, I can do that. I might have to do this. Okay. Yes. Sorry, one moment. This is very sudden. Oh, actually, okay. It seems that Stefano Loretto, I'm not sure who has control of the Zoom call, but my colleague Stefano is also on, and he can actually share the presentation for us, if that's possible.
It says I can share my screen. Shall I share the presentation?
Yes, that would be helpful.
Okay, great. Give me one second.
Great, great. Thank you, Steph. Sorry for the delay. So tonight is just to update you guys on the renewal of the Gloucester Community Aggregation Program. Starting in December, you are going to be getting new pricing with a new supplier. So we're just going to go over some of the program history and get into what that renewal is going to look like. So on the screen here, you can see, like Jill mentioned, you are going into your third contract, which is very exciting. This program has been active since 2018. I mean, you can see here, you guys started with an 11-cent rate that included 5% additional renewable energy. And the current contract, which started in 2021, is also an 11-cent rate that included 10% additional renewable energy. And that rate that you guys were able to lock in for, you know, six years did allow Gloucester residents in the program to save over $17 million, which averages out to about $1,600 per program participant. And I think if you look at residential customers specifically, it averages to about $1,400 savings for residents. Here is a chart that really allows you to see exactly what those savings look like. And this chart is comparing the standard rate of the Gloucester Community Energy Electricity Aggregation Program, which is that green line, and it's compared to the National Grid basic service rate, which is that blue line. So most Gloucester residents are on that standard product. It's like 95% of residents are on that standard product. And you can see here that 11-cent rate stayed steady for almost six years now, which is very different compared to the National Grid rate, which, as you're probably very familiar with, fluctuates every six months, higher in the winter, lower in the summer typically. And one of the best things about the program, you can see in 2022, when National Grid had that 30-cent rate, the program was allowed to offer residents that 11-cent rate, which really helped with those savings that we've seen in the program. And starting in 2024, we are going to be renewing to a 14-cent rate for that standard product, which you can see at the end of the graph here is still coming in underneath that National Grid basic service rate. Another great thing about the program is the renewable energy that you guys add into your standard product. That first term, like we talked about, had 5% additional renewable energy. Second term, you guys added 5% to bring it to 10% additional renewable energy. In this term, you are going to be bumping that up again, keeping with that same trend, adding another 5% to bring it to 15% additional renewable energy in the standard product. And that additional renewable energy does all come from local sources. You partner with a local nonprofit, Green Energy Consumers Alliance. So all of that additional renewable energy is coming from mainly Massachusetts, Rhode Island, as well as a few locations in New Hampshire, which is really great to keep that impact local. Additionally, you can see here the actual numbers of that impact. Over 6 million pounds of carbon dioxide avoided over the course of this current contract term. And with the additional renewable energy that you're adding, we're estimating that you guys are going to be able to avoid about 8 million total pounds of carbon dioxide per year. So, great impact. So let's get into the actual renewal. Like we mentioned, you're on that 11-cent rate, and that has been active since December 2021. It's expiring in December 2024. And your current supplier is Constellation. The upcoming contract, which is starting at the end of this year, The upcoming contract, which is starting at the end of this year, is going to be a 14-cent rate. Again, we're adding that additional 15% renewable, so you're bumping that up by 5%. And you're actually switching suppliers to DynaG. The rates that I have been referencing in terms of the Gloucester CEA program have been the standard rate. Like I mentioned, most residents are on that rate. But we do have two additional optional rates that are also renewing in the program. So that will be the basic rate. You can see here, that's going to be a 13-cent rate. And that product doesn't include any additional renewable energy. And then there is the Gloucester 100% Local Green product. And so that product has all of the energy come from renewable sources. So all three of these products are going to be viable for 36 months, starting December 2024 to December 2027. The great thing is, you guys aren't getting rid of any of your products or adding any new products. So anybody who is participating in the program right now will automatically receive pricing, the new pricing for the product that they're currently in. No action needs to be taken. So like I mentioned, no action needs to be taken for the vast majority of Gloucester residents. One thing that we do like to point out, though, there's a possibility that some residents might have a supplier block on their account. This is something that you can activate with National Grid, and it basically allows National Grid to prevent any changes in your supplier on your bill. And since the Gloucester CEA program is switching suppliers, if somebody has this supplier block on their bill, it wouldn't allow them to be renewed into their current product. Most people who are in the program shouldn't have to worry about this. If you were automatically enrolled, it means that you don't have this on your account. But if you do want to check, I do have the National Grid number up here. And you can always go online and find that National Grid 800 number. That's how you're going to be able to check and see if you have that supplier block on your bill. It's not something that you'd be able to see on your bill, so you do have to contact National Grid. Another great thing, any businesses that are currently enrolled in the program also do get automatically put into the same product with that new pricing. They also don't have to take any action. They still get the same benefits that they do out of the program. And so here, I just have a little marked-up bill that you can see some of the differences that you might notice on your bill come December. For most Gloucester residents, the pricing is going to take effect on the December meter read. And so for most Gloucester residents, that happens on December 3. So the first bill that people will see the actual new pricing on will be the bill that they receive in January for December usage. So the bill that most Gloucester residents receive on or around January 3 is where you're going to be able to see this new pricing. And so with that new pricing, you're going to see a new supplier. It should be listed as Gloucester Community Electricity-DynaG. And you'll see the new pricing as well. Those numbers will vary based on exactly what product that you're in. Additionally, one thing that people sometimes notice when they're looking at their bill for the first time in the account balance section, there are two different columns. There's the National Grid Services section, as well as the Other Supplier Services section. On a basic service bill, you don't see that Other Supplier Services section because National Grid is the supplier, so it's included underneath National Grid Services. If you are looking at your bill for the first time in a while, it might look like this is an additional charge. The only thing is, is that the supply is broken out because it's no longer National Grid. But again, most people are going to be able to see that new pricing in the beginning of January for that bill they receive for December usage. So as it stands right now, we do have the website updated. So that's Gloucester-CEA.com. We do have that website updated with the new pricing, so residents can go online and see that new pricing. We do also have materials for you guys to review. I've sent those to the team that we work with. And that includes the press release. We also have some social media that we've made for you guys. And there is also a staff memo. So anyone at City Hall who's receiving calls will have something to refer to, so they know exactly what to tell residents. And of course, always direct them to me. That's what I always say. But we do have a letter that's going to go out to all current participants. And so that's going to mail early November. So early November, everyone is going to be receiving these letters. It really just details everything we just went over. Usually, we will see an uptick in calls coming in around then. So again, if you're getting anybody asking you questions, just send them right to me. But once that letter hits, the next thing that's going to happen is the actual transition in December, on that December meter read. Again, about December 3 for most residents. And then in January, you'll receive that bill with the new pricing. And it should be all very easy. You're not losing any products, so no one has to take any action. If you have any questions, you can call me, and you can also call the new supplier DynaG. Their information will also be available on the website and in those letters that everyone is going to be receiving.
Can you please repeat the website? Because it's not on the slide.
Yep, it's Gloucester-CEA.com.
And what is your contact information?
My contact information is Rachel.Ferdinand@goodenergy.com. And I can also share that with you guys in writing after.
That'd be great. Thanks.
All right, any questions?
Counselor Groh.
So if there are probably people out there like me who don't remember whether or not they're part of this program or would like to be a part of the program, how do we, one, figure out whether or not we're already part of it? And two, sign up if we're not?
Yeah, so Steph, if you could actually go back to that bill slide, the sample bill slide. So on the second page of your National Grid bill, there is the Supply Services section. And in that first box that says Supplier and Phone Number, if you're part of the program right now, it would say Gloucester Community Electricity-Constellation, which is the current supplier. If you don't see that, if you see National Grid Basic Service or another third-party supplier, you're not part of the program. You can join the program. You would just have to do that by calling the new supplier, DynaG. Again, their information is going to be available on the website. But currently, as part of the transition, between switching from Constellation to DynaG, there's a little bit of an enrollment blackout period. So you wouldn't be able to enroll until those letters mail, and that's going to be November 1, off the top of my head.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, President Gross. Rachel, thank you for your presentation. It's a nice commercial for what you're doing. I appreciate everyone joining you today. I have four quick questions. Every dollar we save residents can be helpful to everybody. And I wonder, though, is the city of Gloucester a customer as an entity?
I would have to double-check. I do think you have some of your accounts on the program. But most municipalities do negotiate longer-term contracts for lower pricing, and that's due to some of the tougher exit terms. The benefits of this program for residents, there's no fee to join, there's no fee to exit. And so the pricing is a little bit different compared to the pricing that the city might enter into with a different supplier.
Thank you. We spend over $1 million a year in electricity costs as a municipality. I understand there's contracts, but if there's a chance to compare what we pay and what we could be paying or maybe saving, the city council can't make that decision. But I just want to encourage the administration to look at that if there's an offer. So you mentioned a couple of times the 5%, the 10%, and the 15%, and we get renewable. Can you quantify what that actually means?
Yeah, in terms of the additional renewable? Yeah, so right now, the Massachusetts DPU does have a required amount of renewable energy that all electricity suppliers have to have in their supply. I think in 2024, that number is 62%. So what Gloucester does is, in the standard product that most people are in, they add another 10% on top of that. So Gloucester residents that are in that standard product would have 72% of their electricity coming from renewable sources.
So just so I understand, it's not that you're encouraging or incenting people to convert to renewable. It's just that the electricity itself comes from renewable sources.
Exactly, yeah.
Is there any program that would help people convert to solar or wind or something else as a part of your program?
Not through our program, but there are community solar programs available in this state that work very well with our program as well.
I'm going to let somebody else.
Okay.
Anybody else have questions? Counselor Benson.
Out of curiosity, when you said renewable, what forms of renewable energy are we talking about? We're talking about wind, solar, geothermal, just curiosity.
Yeah, so it's mainly wind and solar and some small hydro as well. One thing that Green Energy Consumers Alliance doesn't do is that waste energy. So that's, you know, not the prime, I guess, for Massachusetts renewable. So wind, solar, and some hydro is mainly what it comes from.
What do you mean by waste? I'm just curious. What do you mean by waste?
An aerobic digestion generates some amount of methane, and that can be captured to be used as energy. But it's just not something that Green Energy Consumers Alliance, who does the additional renewable, they don't participate in that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gilman.
So I have a couple of kind of basic questions about communications. And this might be something that Jill Cahill might want to answer. But this is a pretty big deal, and this has been a really good benefit for the two-thirds of the folks that are in it. And I was just wondering what the city's position is in terms of getting this front and center on the website. So it's kind of in that section right in the beginning of the homepage as a reminder with the link to this website that we talked about. I think that that would be a spectacular way to be very present with our customers and our residents.
Yeah, absolutely. So Pam and Greg have been working with Rachel. So it will, there'll be a banner for the meantime, for the short term while they're first sending out these letters, so people know what to expect. But I do think it's important to remind everybody that this is, because it's our third agreement, most of our customers are already in. And it's an opt-out program. I know Counselor Groh had asked that. It's an opt-out program. So chances are, you're already in. We did the first agreement in 2018 when I had first started in community development. So there was a lot of questions at that time. But I think our residents and our customers are pretty familiar with it at this point. But it will be front and center on the website. As Rachel said, we have letters going out to returning customers as well as potential new customers. The, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong here, Rachel, the hard-to-reach group are people who have private suppliers outside of National Grid and outside of our program. Those are the ones that I don't think we can reach. So we will make sure everything's front and center on the website.
One more. So my second question is, you have, I did some, I wanted to refresh my knowledge of this, so I was fooling around on the website today. And there's a really cool four-page document on this website, "Resources Available Regardless of Income." And it does say that this flyer expires September 2024. And this content is awesome. It's a beautiful four-page flyer. So I just wanted to make sure we keep our eye on the prize and update this. It even reminds people that they can go to the Rose Baker Senior Center and sit down and learn more about what their own energy level is, which might be a perfect time when they get to understand this more. Maybe we could do a proactive session there. But this is a great tool, and I just think that we can really exploit it and make a big deal about it. So.
I will definitely have Pam look at that and make sure it's updated if we can, and happy to do an event at the Senior Center anytime. And I just want to address Counselor Worthley's question. I just asked Mike to confirm. I know when we entered this before that the city was on a separate negotiated rate, which is lower than this because of the enormity of our size. But I asked Mike to confirm, but I'm reasonably sure I'm still right.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Rachel, for this great update. When we first heard from this program, it was a lot of questions, a lot of confusion. And a lot of people were all over the place and not knowing what to do. And some of the questions that were brought up were basically what you probably hear in every city. The one thing that I can say is that through this process, most of the people have found it to be reliable, and it works for them. There was one question that I had asked back in 2018. Is there a spread-out payment plan for people in this type of situation that want to break their payments up into 12 months versus the heavy seasons to the light seasons? Is that something that has changed? Is something that's available now with this product?
Not through, not through the program itself, but in terms of budget billing, that's available through National Grid. You can still participate in budget billing and be in the program at the same time.
Excellent. Thank you very much. There's some of the concerns that were brought up to us back in the beginning from people that were concerned about their heavy uses during the summer with electric, during the winter with electric heat, but not so much during the summer. So that's great information for me to pass along and also the reminder to let people know that we can look into anything that's been blocked, and they can probably take that off and bring these discussions up. Thank you.
Counselor Grace.
Thank you, Rachel. Couple of questions. I just want to make sure that everything remains status quo with National Grid in regard to any repairs that need to be done with people when they see, you know, something is changing. You know, the mind can get going.
Yeah, totally. Nothing changes with National Grid. If a power line is down, they're still going to be the ones that you call.
And then can you, do you have, you know, just kind of an estimate of what that 3-cent increase would be the average increase for a household, you know, for normal usage?
Not off the top of my head. Probably about $18 a month, give or take.
Thank you.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. Just one last question. And you've obviously done this successfully in other cities and towns. What would you advise, as nine of us counselors here, with all, we all have our own sphere of influence, what could we do specifically to direct more residents to at least be aware of and opt into this program specifically? Please, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like was mentioned before, senior centers are a good place to reach a lot of residents, especially when you're talking about people who aren't online as much. That's usually where we find a good place to have those in-person events. We do also find that there tends to be a lot of traction in Facebook groups. Some of those community-run Facebook groups, conversations can get going in there. So it's good to sometimes have people in there. That's why we provide those social media graphics as well. I would say those are two of the main places that I tend to focus on.
Thank you, Rachel.
Perhaps I could add something to that, if possible? Stefano Loretto here. Thank you for having us, first of all. And yes, so one of the exciting new things is Good Energy has been working for several years in spearheading an effort to try and change some of the Department of Public Utility guidelines as it relates exactly to what you were discussing and the ability to inform people that are not, that are with other suppliers or have, you know, already opted out of the program. And that was always forbidden. But that has just in the few past few months, there's been a new set of guidelines that are now going to allow us to reach out to people that are not currently in the program and make them aware of the program. So that is, that's something we'll be able to work on with the, work on with the city to craft a letter and make people aware of the program that traditionally we'd never been able to reach out to before.
Thank you.
Counselor Mejota.
Quick question. Could this presentation just be shared with us?
Yeah, yeah, I can send that. I think I sent it to Greg and Pam earlier, so I'll make sure that they get it to you guys.
Thank you. And I know when this was first brought up in, what, 2021? Is that, no, 18. Letters went to everybody in the city. Is there another thought about doing the same? Is there another thought about doing the same type of mailing for this enrollment period?
So we do do periodic sweeps, is what we call them, and we do those about quarterly. And the point of those mailings is to grab new customers, so newly eligible accounts. They'll get sent the same notification letter that went out to all eligible accounts at the beginning of the program, saying the same basic thing, it's still automatic enrollment, so we do those about quarterly. All residents are going to get this, all, excuse me, all participants are going to get the renewal letter that we mentioned earlier. And additionally, like Steph just mentioned, we do now have the ability to reach out to third-party customers and people who have previously opted out, so that's also something we can work on in the coming months.
Thank you.
That's it, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys. I'll make sure that you get this presentation.
Great work, this has been, like you said, huge savings to the citizens of Gloucester, you know, seventeen hundred dollars per household over the years, so it's a big benefit. People need to be taking advantage of this and make that number even bigger.
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda.
Would anyone like to remove anything off the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Groh, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
The October 17th Budget and Finance Standing Committee report.
Counselor Memard.
With your permission, thank you, Council President Groh, we have four items from Budget and Finance Committee for your consideration tonight. The first is a memorandum from our city clerk, a 2024 SBT, Special Budgetary Transfer, number three, in the amount of $8,487.20, and a subsequent SBT, number four, in the amount of $369.44. These are both for election police details for September 2, 2024. Should I read the motion?
Certainly.
On a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council approve a special budgetary transfer, 2025 SBT, number three, in the amount of $8,487.20, from the registration police detail account number as noted, to police uniform overtime account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of reimbursement of police details for the state primary on September 3, 2024, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
And, and.
Next up.
Grace and her staff did make a presentation to us explaining the ins and outs of this, but the second motion on the same matter, Budgetary, Budget and Finance voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council approve a special budgetary transfer, 2024, 2025 SBT, number four, in the amount of $369.44, from the registration police detail account number as noted, to the police uniform shift differential account number as noted, and this is for the purpose of reimbursement of police details for the state primary on September 3, 2024, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
The second item that Budget and Finance Committee reviewed last Thursday was a memorandum from our police chief requesting our acceptance of a fiscal year 2024 bulletproof vest grant, and this is in the amount of $14,221.94. I'll read the motion, which was made by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, and we voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept under Mass General Law 4453A, a U.S. Department of Justice fiscal year 2024 bulletproof vest program grant, passed through the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, in the amount of $14,221.94 for the purchase of purchasing 12 ballistic vests, the Gloucester Police Department officers. The federal portion of the grant is $7,110.97, and the state portion of the grant is the same, $7,110.97. The grant period is through October 31, 2026, and there is no local match for this grant, and I so move.
Second.
Discussion? Oh, motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley.
Discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
The next two all to relate to our acceptance of generous funds, in this case, private donations. The first is a memorandum from our Director of Elder Services requesting our acceptance of donations to support the Gloucester Council on Aging and the Rose Baker Senior Center in the total amount of $825. And on a motion by myself, bless you. Second, and, and, seconded by Counselor Worthley, bless him too. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council accept various cash donations under Mass General Law 4453A to support the Council on Aging in the total amount of $825 from the following members and business partners in our community, who are the West Gloucester Trinitarian Congregational Church, Trina Smith, Jonathan Conant, Marilyn Grant, and Phyllis Reardon, for a total of $825, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. I just, I think you said on the previous motion that the grant period ran through October 31, 2026, so I just want to correct that that is August 31, 2026. On the previous motion about the, the.
Item number two.
Bulletproof vests, yes, that's all.
I guess I'm just thinking October.
Oh, make an amendment to the motion.
The amendment to the motion on item number two relating to bulletproof vests is that the grant period is through August 31, 2026, and there is no local match for this grant.
Motion made, motion on the amendment made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Groh. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We need to revoke the motion.
Now we need to revoke the motion, you can say.
I'd like to re-comeet the motion, and I so, so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.
Thank you, Council President Groh, for your keen eye or ear. The final motion from Budget and Finance from last Thursday is a memorandum from our Director of Veteran Services requesting our acceptance of donations to support the K-PAN Veteran Services, and this is in the total amount of $650. And on a motion by myself, seconded by Counselor Worthley, Budget and Finance Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend that the city council accept various cash donations with gratitude under Mass General Law 4453A to support the Veterans Services in the amount of $650 from the following members and business partners in our community, who are Ed Camo, you know, Bookout, Lighthouse Landscaping, and Andrew and Joyce Wallace, for $600, and I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Memard, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
There was not an ordinance as an administration meeting on October 14 due to the holiday, and there was not a planning and development meeting on October 16 because there were no matters for the committee to take up, so the next order of business is public hearings.
Can I just quickly make a, a quick announcement about the next couple of meetings?
I guess Counselor Groh wants to speak about PND.
PND, we didn't have a meeting last week. I just want to give people a heads up that the 20 Main Street application will become to PND on November, the November 6 meeting. We are going to have presentations and discussions on the engineering reports and the third-party review, and then I'm going to request the council president to advertise the next following meeting, the 20th of November, as a council of the whole, so that all counselors can have an opportunity to ask questions on the application before we make a recommendation.
So these, the continued to November 12 will be pushed out even further. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
We didn't have a meeting for O&amp;A, but I would like to let everybody in the city know that, especially contractors, that we do have some new ordinances being put in place by the state of Massachusetts that will be changing some things, the way that we do permitting for housing, and I'd ask that you reach out to the building department to look into what's happening, so there's no surprises. This is a state law, and I just want to let everybody know that this is something that's going to happen, and that they could reach out to the building inspector's office and the building commission, so they're not surprised what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2024, number 16, SCP 2024, number three, the application of 20 Main LLC for the demolition and conversion of an office building to multifamily housing containing 24 units and a retail space at Main Street number 20, MAP 7, Lot 94 in the CB District.
This will be continued for now to November 12, 2024.
Public hearing 2024, number 31, RZ 2024, number four, from Council Order 24, number 21, amend Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.7.4, planning board review, and section 5.7.5D, special permit criteria, City Council, regarding adding third-party independent review requirements.
And this public hearing is continued until November 12, 2024.
Public hearing 2024, number 32, RZ 2024, number five, from Council Order number 24-22, amend the Gloucester zoning ordinance, section 5.9, cluster development, section 5.9.3.2, review by other boards by adding a new subsection A, review by independent consultants.
And this will be also continued to November 12, 2024. Next order of business? Yiddo. Oh, okay. No, they're not open, I guess, yep. So I'm going to open both those and continue them, like I said, to November 24, so. All three? All three. No, the other one's open. Already open. So I'm going to open public hearing 2024, 31, RZ 2024-04, and public hearing 2024-032, RZ 2024-05, and I can do them both at the same time. And they will be continued until November 12. Continued to November 12, you happy?
Next is public hearing 2024, number 33, to amend GCO Chapter 5, Building and Building Regulations, Section 5-15, Building Permit Fees, Subsections A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and J, and amend Section 5-44, Fees for Electrical Work, and amend GCO Chapter 26, Waits and Measures, Section 26-2, Collection of Fees by Sealer and Disposition thereof.
Going to open the public hearing. Those speaking in favor? Hey, introduce yourselves for the record, please.
Hi, Jill Cahill, Chief Administrative Officer in Mayor Verka's office, and I'm joined by Rob Vacari, our building commissioner. I want to just, Rob's going to run through the presentation for you, but I want to just give you an update. This is an effort that we've asked all of our department heads to run through, to visit all of, and revisit all of the fees. We are looking to take, compare ourselves to other, like, size and similar communities, checking to see when the last time they were addressed, and making sure that we are doing a better job, and particularly for this team of covering the outstanding amount of work that they have to do every day. And I'll let Rob address too, as Counselor Nolan said, there will be an update to the building code, so there'll be an increased amount of work on, on his team as well. So we hope you'll take a look at these and carefully consider them and support what we've put forward. As I said, you'll see more coming through other department heads as we move throughout the rest of this calendar year and prepare for budget season.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to share my screen, if possible. Here we go. All right, so the first thing we're going to get into. I'm going to read my screen. That is tough to read. Whoop. What did I do? There we go. All right. Not touching that. All right, so most of the stuff that you're going to see in this is more of just a formatted change because of the way it's done in the book.
Rob, could you hold the microphone closer? It's for the.
Sorry.
Recording.
Okay. So everything that's in red is what's being removed, everything in blue is what's been put in place, but the majority of the stuff isn't really a change, it's more of just a formatted change. One of the changes is on the demolition permits, we're going from $100 per story to $200 a story. The other major change on this is the sheet metal permits, which we did not have a fee for, is now going to be like mechanical permits. If it's residential, $50, if it's associated to a building permit. If it's in commercial, same way, but it's $100. If it's not associated with a building permit, it's $10 per thousand of the cost of the job. And we're going to scroll down to. Other major changes are the 30-day temporary occupancy, we didn't have a charge for it, the process does take some time, so we're doing a $50 fee for the first time, and then they're only good for 30 days, so if you have to renew it, it'll be 30-day, $30 each time you have to renew it. And then the other change is the lost and damaged job permit codes, the orange codes, we don't charge for them as a city of Gloucester, and my office does about 150 of duplicates a year, so we've decided that a $30 fee should be charged for these. Those are, if, those are the changes. Everything else is pretty much just a formatted change. It's, these fees haven't changed, they're pretty close to what we've looked at, at the other towns that we've gone into, we've looked at Beverly, Peabody, Danvus, and Salem, all the fees are pretty much the same. We're still somewhat on the low end of these fees. Some of these towns are charging significantly more than we do, but I didn't see any major reason to increase anything else on those types of fees. The next one is probably the biggest change. So with the instance of my new code that comes out in January, we have to do what is known as an annual safety inspection. Most of these places are places of assemblies, whether it's a restaurant, museums, bowling alleys, the list. So previously, there were four things on the list. As you look through, I have a, almost two and a half pages of requirements of these places that are all required to have an annual safety inspection. One of the big things that are in here that is extremely new is the short-term rentals, they will require an annual fee. As you know, we implemented the short-term rental registration, this coincides with that registration that will go in effect in January. The other major change on this is that restaurants that have alcohol, used to be $100, is now going to be $150. The hospital is done every two years, it was, I believe it was $200, it's now going to be $600. It's now going to be $600. The building does take quite a significant time to, um, get through that building to do the inspection. The other big change on this is that all restaurants have to, anyone that has seating in a restaurant is required to have the safety inspection. So going to be a few restaurants that may not be happy with me and I apologize, but these are all code requirements. Um, these are not something I can just make up. The next thing is plumbing. Um, the only change on this compared to what we've had in the past is that commercial hot water heaters are now going to be a hundred and fifty dollars where they were only a hundred dollars. Other than that, the only change on the plumbers besides that is they are still required to take a manual permit paper-wise, which then we have to convert and put onto our computer system. So being the fact that we still have to take it and it takes time for my inspectors to put this stuff into the computer, we're going to start charging $25 to process that into the system. Um, the next one is pretty substantial. It is electrical, pretty much wiping out the entire thing. It hasn't been touched since 2006 and there are just too many, um, permit fees that don't make any sense. You could do a $300,000 upgrade service on a commercial building for 50 bucks. It didn't make any sense. My, my electrical inspector has to go out there two to three times, so we pretty much have revamped his to match what we do in the building department, building aspect of it. When they're attached to a building permit, it's $3 per thousand on residential. It's $4 per thousand for commercial. If they're not, it's $7 per thousand on residential and $10 per thousand on commercial. Other than that, the rest of the fees are pretty much, that's the only real change. And then again, same with the plumbing, the application on paper, they're still required to take one. So again, we have to put it into the system, so it's a $25 fee. And then I'm going to go to the next one. This is the fun one. Did I do that right? Yeah. Oh, yeah. There it is. There we go. Yeah. So this is a complete 100% overhaul on the seals and weights and measures because they haven't been touched since 1989. And the amount of scales, gas pumps, um, that are in the city is a lot more than I think what most people realize. Soap. This is a complete overhaul. Um, we were charging $20 for a gas pump. It takes my sealer probably about a half an hour to 45 minutes per pump. The average gas station has somewhere between eight to 16 pumps in it. So these are the reasons we've upped these fees. The other thing that is really new that is required by the state of Massachusetts is the electronic retail scale, uh, scanners. So any place that scans a barcode, they have to be verified and checked that they, um, operate properly. We've never had this in our fees, so this is straight from the state, what they charge, which is fewer than four is $85. From four to 11 would be $165 and anything over 11 is $275. Everything else on this is an increase, but it's not really an increase by much. It's just a account for the fact that this all takes time and the equipment that we use is not inexpensive, fairly, fairly expensive equipment. So, um, this will justify us having to maintain all this equipment and keep going, what, if required by the state of Massachusetts. So, any questions?
Councilor Nolan.
Oh, yeah. One thing I got to just update to-
We, we got to wait on questions, actually.
Uh, the other thing that I forgot to add was the fact that the multifamily inspections are three or more units and it's been changed to, a hundred dollars is still there, but it's $5 per unit.
Okay, anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Here we have one person.
Hi. Hello.
Name and address.
Oh, 21 Cliff Road, Gloucester, Mass.
Name.
Kimberly General. Yeah, I just had a question about that demolition permit, permitting. Um, you know, a hundred dollars a story, wouldn't it make more sense to do that by square footage as well? I mean, somebody might have a, you know, little shed that is falling apart that they have to get rid of and somebody else might have a motel. You know, a big motel that they want to demolish. I think square footage might make sense on that. Just an idea. You know, with a demolition permits. Might be more fair.
Okay, thank you. Don't see anyone else with their hand up? Have we had any communications, Madam Clerk?
We have not.
Okay, now time for questions. Councilor Nolan.
Thank you. Uh, Rob, I just wanted to clarify with you the reason for the building permit, the increase for reprint. Um, I know what the answer is, but if you could let people know why we have an issue with this?
Um, some of the reason is the fact that the, uh, material that we use to print the permit codes, it's not normal paper. It's, uh, getting a little costly, so it's, and it takes time because we have to reprint them and then we have to go around and get all the signatures. At the end of the day, these are all in your house jacket, in files that we keep in our, in our apartment, so to have to run around and chase after signatures, so it does take time, so that's why.
Excellent. And also, isn't one of the reasons that people think they're doing the right thing by laminating them?
Yes. Please don't.
Councilor Gilman.
Thank you, Council President. Um, Rob, I've got two questions for you. Uh, the first is, can you just walk us through a little bit in terms of how you did best practices and researching what other, like municipalities are charging? Because it was so long since we did this, but the more you can get us grounded in how much, you know that these rates are competitive, the easier we'll be able to sell it with constituents that might be surprised to see these increases.
Yeah, so what we did was, we went to the other towns' municipalities' websites, printed out their fees, and then I'm in communication with all of the building commissioners in these towns. We meet generally once a month, um, to discuss all sorts of aspects. So we're always in constant communication with each other. I know Salem probably back in May increased their fees, um, before we even did ours, so I know all these people are in the process of doing this and where, where we have been with a $10 per thousand is rate and range with the rest of these towns. Some of these towns have $20, $15 for a thousand. So we're still kind of on the low end, but not in the high end, which I think is where we should be for our community. Um, it allows both ranges of what we, people we have in our community to be able to, you know, maintain their properties.
Question. May I, I'd just like to, um, bring forward the question that Kim General asked. Does that skew, um, if, if her question is common in the industry? If you have a shed and you demolish it, um, compared to a whole floor of a hotel, um, is that, is that the norm in the industry? Um, or does she bring up a good, um, recommendation?
The most towns that I have talked to, it's generally a fee per, per story. Um, and usually if you're taking off just a single floor of a building, you don't need this type of a permit. This is basically if you're removing an entire building. So if it's a two-story building, a three-story building you're removing, you would have to get this permit. If you're removing a shed, a swimming pool, these permits are required. But if you're just taking down a single story off of a two-story building, you wouldn't need this type of a permit. It'd be a different type of permit. I don't know if we'd want to do it per square footage because then it's a little more difficult. Then I have to have measurements and I have to verify what the square footage is because not everyone's going to be, the flat fee seems to work out better, I think.
Thank you.
Councilor Grow.
Uh, just quickly, when are these, uh, changes going to go into effect for, for people?
So my thought would be go January, if this passes, to go January on all this because that's in line with everything else for me. My codes, a lot of those annual inspections are all going to go, have to go in a plex in January, so my thought would be January 1st.
Speaking of the short-term rental, and we talked about the need for an inspector for that, have you, have we gotten to the point where we're close to hiring somebody who's going to be on board for January 1st?
I'm not quite there yet. I'm still implementing everything into the system. Uh, once I get that in, then we'll figure out that aspect of it.
Councilor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Rob, for your presentation and administration for the work on this. Uh, just a couple of questions. Um, I, correct me if I'm wrong, your customer is more contractors or residents?
Uh, I would say it's probably a 60/40 contractor, the homeowner.
And have you communicated or will you communicate with either of those groups? If there is a way to reach them, what these changes are? And the reason why I ask is, in some of these cases, it's small amounts of money, but in a couple of cases, it might be sizable enough. If a contractor quotes a job at X today-
Right.
-and the building permit or these other fees ends up being Y, does the contractor end up absorbing that? Does the resident end up absorbing that? And I just think that it'd be helpful to have communication with the various groups that-
So what we'll do is, what we've done with everything else, like for my building code change, it goes into effect in January. I have posted it all over my office. We tell everyone, um, that we deal with and then I'll have the administration post it on the website that there are changes to look, uh, for what the significant changes are.
I just don't want people to be too surprised on that. Yeah, thank you. Uh, second question is, do you have either yourself or your office, uh, the authority or the flexibility, for example, if someone is adding that second unit to be able to maybe make their property more, um, profitable, but they can't afford some of the, the permits? If they are, you know, are there any means testing? If someone doesn't have the means for these, we have any reduced rates or the flexibility to waive some fees in those specific examples?
I technically do not. That would be on the, uh, administration to make those decisions.
Doesn't need to be for today, but I do wonder if there's a way to build in some flexibility where there's a means test. Um, and again, I'm not talking $50, but some of these other ones where it might be more, there may be a chance where cutting some of the costs for some people might be the difference in making it more affordable for them. And then the last question, and this is maybe for you or maybe for Jill, during the budget process, we've heard repeatedly about using the five-year average on some of the projections for revenue. If these all go through, do we have a guess, assuming the same number of permits are, are required or, or asked of each year, do we have a guess of what impact that would have on our budget on an annual basis? Obviously, if you implement in January, it's a half a year, but do we have a projection?
We haven't, we're working on it. Wait, wait, do you have a-
On the mic. Yep, mic.
I'm sorry. We, we do not, I don't have that number with me tonight, although I know Rob did some initial kind of back-of-the-envelope numbers, um, because we were going to wait to see what you decided to implement and not, but you will have them all, you'll see them in the projections. Connor's already working on, and you'll see these as we come. He has five-year projections put into place, um, across the board and this impact might, will likely be small. I think when you and I discussed it, it was in the 100, 150,000 annually area, um, but that's why we're looking across the board.
And the last question, completely and relative to that, is as there are more demands on the building inspector's office, sorry, it's a very challenging office, I can imagine, does any of that new revenue get directed, or could it be directed, to the office that's generating the fees?
Uh, currently, all of their fees, except for vacant buildings, um, go into the general fund. Vacant buildings goes into a separate fund. It's something that we could contemplate, but I think in the larger budget picture, now would not be the time to, to make that change.
Okay, thank you.
On that point, um, the building department does not pay their, um, health insurance, their retirement, you know, all of that goes, so it, it, they get, you know, these go into the general fund to help fund, you know, it goes back to them.
Right. I just was thinking, with these expanded responsibilities, if, if we're accounting for that with these fees, or is it just sort of separate?
I think we're going to have to account for it with these fees, partially.
Right, okay, thank you.
Because there's definitely more responsibilities coming and, and it's, we've had, you know, the, the attrition through the years due to budget, um, in the last 25 years of Prop two and a half, you know, everybody's been pared down, so. And we see here that the, the additional inspections that are going to be required are going to require, you know, the return.
Can I give you a little?
Any, any other questions?
Councilor Benson.
Thank you. I'm looking at the changes to facilities licensed by the Alcohol Beverage Commission, where alcohol beverages are served and consumed. It's going to 150. Where was it before?
It was a hundred dollars before.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any other questions? I'm going to close the public hearing. And we will have the committee report.
All right, on the committee report, it's a, a long, long stage of pages here. Um, I believe everybody has the gist of what's going on and what's happening. I think that, um, Rob has done a great job working with the administration, being very fair with our public and also being very upfront and wanting to get this done. Um, obviously, some of these changes haven't been increased since 1989 and with technology and different wiring, especially electrical, there's a lot more things to inspect such as, you know, not just cable TV, but, you know, ethernet and different things going through walls and stuff like that, and there's, there's going to be more cost and time involved through pay and, and rate changes. So I think everything here makes sense. With that being said, I'd like to move on to the motions without any objection.
Councilor Benson.
Um, for procedural, could I make an amendment to this, to this change now or after the motion?
After the motions.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I just want to remember, you know, I'm still a little green, you know.
You got, you got one more month of that.
Councilor Nolan, please.
All right. Um, committee recommendation on a motion by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grace. The audit, the audit administration committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council amend GCO chapter five, building and building regulations, section 5 dash 15, building permit fees, subsection A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and I. J, sorry. I have dirty glasses. And amend section 5 dash 44, fees for electrical work, as included in the proposed ordinance, and I so move.
Motion made by Councilor Nolan, seconded by Councilor Grow. Discussion. Councilor Benson.
I'd like to make an amendment going toward the facilities licensed by Alcohol Beverages Control Commission, that I'd like to go back to the hundred dollars. I think with the cost of living crisis continuing to face our, oh, yes, okay. Sorry.
One moment. What, which presentation was that on that Rob made?
This was on, um, page four of eight, under-
First one he shared?
Yeah, under any, um, facilities licensed by the Alcohol Beverages Control Commission, and it's the change to 150.
So, may I ask, is it making a motion to delete? I'm trying to be helpful. I'm trying to delete the change.
Yes, to go back to the original, but I wanted, I need to- Yes, to go back to the original, but I wanted, I need to get a second first, so.
So motion is to delete the change?
Yes.
Right? And I'd second that for discussion purposes.
Yep.
All right, motion. The amendment made by Counselor Benson, seconded by Counselor Worthley. Discussion.
I will discuss, I think like 150, it's 50 more dollars, but with the continued cost of living facing our restaurants industry, specifically restaurants that serve, um, beer and alcohol, they're continue to face a crisis, especially on Main Street. We have a cost of living crisis. Um, I think that going, keeping it as is would really be beneficial to, um, our restaurant industry on, across the city.
Question?
This may be for Rob. So just so I understand it correctly, Counselor Benson, you're saying that a restaurant owner who pays $100 a year to be able to serve alcohol shouldn't be paying $150? Is that the right understanding of the motion? Okay.
Yeah, because, yeah, you're going to increase it to 50 more dollars. And a lot of these restaurants that have, serve alcohol, um, have to close up during the winter. So there's already, there's already a loss there. So this is some, I think that, that's really why I'm trying to bring this forward, um, is to speak to those, to those businesses who are dealing with rising costs. Cost of food have gone up, and that also is driving, um, a lot of people not to work in the industry as well because of it, so.
Counselor Majota.
Can we bring?
Yeah.
Rob back up.
Rob, can you come back up and answer a question?
Um, my question is, how long roughly does it take, um, an individual to inspect a restaurant? And was that part of the increase, you know?
So it's a three, three inspection person. And we do generally three to four, depending on their location, um, at a time. And they take about three hours total. It would, depending on where. So like, I'm in the middle of it right now. I have, we did three of them, let's say two, I did three of them yesterday. It's three inspectors and we were done in about two and a half hours because they were right next to each other. So it does take some time.
That, that's three inspectors at a time.
Yep.
At an average of an hour, hour and a half.
About an hour, about an hour piece, depending on the size of them. Some are bigger than others, so.
Three-man hours of our inspectors.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
Uh, this question again is, is to Rob. Um, in these inspections, it's, it's not looking at basically the building. It's looking at, see if there's any bugs in bottles, how they store their, their, their property, their food, how their glasses are stored, how clean is this?
It's, it's, it's not even that. We are in these buildings looking at 100% of life safety. It's about the egress path, the emergency lights, the, the hood system, the anthill systems, the extinguishers, uh, their fire alarm systems, everything to do with life safety. Without this inspection, these establishments cannot renew their liquor license. The state will not renew their liquor license without this inspection.
Excellent, thank you.
Val. Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. Um, I've got another question for you, Rob. When was the last time that that rate was changed from $100?
As far as I know, those changes haven't been touched since 2006, and I don't think they've been changed since 99.
So if it was 2006, that's 18 years ago, if that was the number.
Yeah.
What did you learn when you were checking out what Salem activity and that's where a lot of our, um, residents might go to?
They're charging about $200. So we're still under what they charge. And the last time this was probably brought, there might have been 20, 25 licenses. We just issued a, another license, year-round liquor license to Saltwater Grill. It gives us a grand total of 39 year-round liquor licenses.
Thank you.
Counselor Grow.
Just for clarification, this is not a health inspection, uh, inspection. It's, that's.
No, this is, this is 100%, has nothing to do with the health department. It's just the life safety requirements for the building.
Counselor Worthley.
Thank you. On the motion, um, so although I was happy to second, and I appreciate you looking out for businesses in your ward or in general, um, I think it's a, a small increase that they can certainly pass on to the customer who's buying alcohol if they so decide. And this is not the difference in someone going in business or out of business for the $50, especially where they're paying $100,000 for a liquor license in some cases. This additional $50 is the cost of doing business, especially since it hasn't changed since 2006. I appreciate Counselor Benson advocating for downtown businesses. This is not the hill to die on for me, and I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the amendment? All right, vote on the amendment. All those in, in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay. The amendment fails eight to one. Back to the original motion. Any more discussion on the original motion?
Counselor Gilman.
It seems like it's been a good process. It seems like it's timely. We did best practices. We know how much it's costing our inspection department to do their job. And, um, I will be supporting this as proposed, so thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Ready for the next one?
Motion by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace to amend the committee recommendation by adding a provision to review the section of the ordinance every five years for compliance. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. Counselor Grow.
Just some clarification on what that, what that means, uh, every five years for compliance? Or are we looking at every five years for potential increases or revisions?
Counselor Nolan.
Uh, this was a recommendation brought up by Counselor Grace. And what it basically did was we asked the administration if they were all right with the clause being to revisit every five years to look to see if we need to adjust up or down to these provisions and to see how things are going. So it's more aligned with, instead of just saying this is, you know, what we're going to do, I believe this is saying that, you know, in five years, we're going to look at it again because we're looking at a situation where some of these cases have been 1999, 2006. Um, we need to be a little bit more up to date than just going back to those situations. And I thought that that was a great motion to add to the agenda.
Counselor Worthley.
Yes, I'd be happy to support this, but I'd like to, um, recommend a, a move for a friendly amendment to take out the word, uh, in compliance. And I think I know exactly what you're trying to do, see if we're in keeping with the current rates and things like that. But I, I don't think compliance would be found in this ordinance on fees. I think, unless I'm understanding it wrong, to see if we're in line. So I'd just like to delete the word in compliance, two words. So I, and I just move, so move.
There's no N, it's just compliance.
Speak five years?
No, it's five years, but the word compliance.
Four compliance you want to get rid of?
Yes.
You switch from compliance to review?
So same goal, just I don't, O and A doesn't make compliance decisions on these kinds of things, so. And I don't have.
Without objection.
We're going to change it to revision or just remove?
It already has review in there. Remove four compliance without objection.
Friendly amendment, but I have another friendly.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to suggest that I think we said that we would make this effective on January 1st, 2025, right? That takes care of our 31 days wait and everything. But, um, if that is the case, I would like to suggest that we actually state that date of January 1st, 2030, and every five years after. Because we're going to need to know when we're looking at this ordinance, um, whomever the city clerk's going to be and whomever's going to be chairing O and A, when the last time we did this. And I just think it's helpful to put a date in. So that would be my friendly amendment.
It needs to be wordsmithed in there.
I think.
Counselor Grow.
Yeah, I think we got to be careful about putting, uh, January 1st, 2030 in there because people might interpret that as the, uh, date at which we're initiating the changes. I think we just say that, um, every five years, um, uh, at some point, we should put in the date, the effective date of the, uh, of the ordinance change somewhere. So I guess the question is.
The effective date is 31 days from now.
Yeah. Oh, it's not January, January 1st?
No.
Okay.
I mean, they'll be implementing whatever they, we're, we're giving, you know.
Okay.
We're, we're, I don't know when, will you be, do we want to implement them January?
We're going to implement them January 1st because it's system-wise and everything else. It just makes more sense for me.
Okay. Then we don't need to do anything. Is that going to be implemented by?
Could we say, may I have permission to speak?
Yes.
Could we say after the effective date of January 1st, 2025? That way, we're stating the date that it became effective. Um, and, um, and we're being reminded about the five years after that.
Um, so. So after five years.
Three, five years, beginning on, or?
After. Dan. So I think, um, review of this section of ordinance every five years after January 1st, 2025?
Second.
Well, second on that. Well, it's a friendly amendment, so if there's no objection.
I know, but where's my appreciation? Frank on it.
Yes, we couldn't have it. No, why not?
I'll just get him ready.
Okay, so, um, motion as amended? Um, so vote on this as amended? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Nine to zero.
Yep, let's go. If we can amend that, too.
On a motion by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Grace, the O and A committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 26, Waits and Measures, Section 26-2, Collection of Fees by Sealer and disposition thereof, as included in the proposed draft ordinance and ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota.
Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it, nine to zero. Thank you, Rob.
Rob, thank you for all the work. No problem, thank you.
And Jill?
I know, but Martha, we can't take you right now, sorry.
Okay.
Okay.
When it comes up? One minute. Okay, next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing 2024 number 34 from Council Order 2024 number 20 to amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking Prohibited at All Times, and Section 22-291, Towaway Zone, by adding Pine Street, Northerly Side from a point beginning at its intersection with Washington Street in an easterly direction for a distance of 90 feet.
I'm going to open the public hearing. Those speaking in favor, I think Counselor Benson, do you want to go first?
No, I'll, I'll.
Okay. Name and address for the, um, record, please. Uh, I think we need to turn, the microphone needs to be turned on.
My name is Martha Bowen. I live at 8 Pine Street. And I find that where Washington and Pine meet at the corner, uh, there is a very dangerous area where SUV-type big vehicles park right at that corner. There's a sign, but, um, you can see the top of the sign, but you cannot see cars whipping around Washington Street onto Pine, and that creates a very dangerous, uh, situation for pedestrians. And, um, I advocated to have that become a no-parking, um, zone for the safety of pedestrians primarily, also other vehicles. If they're pulling out of the driveways and a car whips around real fast, they could get hit. And I don't know if there's any need to say anything else about that. It's just very dangerous. I could speak about other traffic things in other parts of the city, but I want to focus on this right now. Does anybody have any questions for me regarding?
Not at the question period yet, thank you.
Oh, okay. Well, I thought. So I'm done?
You're done for now, yep. There's a question. Thank you.
I heard you say you closed, we're closing the public hearing, that's why I became.
No, not yet. This is a second one. Yep, we have multiple ones. Speaking in favor, Counselor Benson?
Yeah, this was brought to my attention by, um, Ms. Bowen and other residents concerning issues of blinds, creating blind spots and potential dangers posed by vehicles. And the Traffic Commission, um, recommended this. And the space that's being proposed to be removed is only 10 feet. So that's less than a standard 16-foot, uh, space for an average vehicle. So we're effectively losing about a half a spot.
Anyone who wants to speak in opposition? Any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Questions from counselors?
To Counsel President?
Okay. Okay, Counselor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Counsel Benson, first, thank you, good job. It's a dangerous intersection, no question, or intersection for that street. But the proposal says a distance of 90 feet. You just, I think you said 10 or 16 feet. Just help me understand the difference between those two.
Microphone. The average parking, um, space measures only 10 feet. So what, according to the Traffic Commission, um, the measure is going to be only 10 feet. It's less than the standard six-foot space for an average vehicle, if that makes sense.
It doesn't make sense. That's just, help me understand it because, uh, it's 10 feet or is it 90 feet?
From what I'm, from the, according to the Traffic Commission, the, the parking spot that we're losing is around 10 feet.
Counselor Grow.
Counsel Benson, most of that distance, 90 feet, is actually already driveway for.
Yes.
It's there and, and other driveways in excess. So the only part of the road that's actually being affected in terms of parking spaces is the 10 feet.
Yes.
That you're talking about.
Yep.
So it's 80 feet of already driveways that shouldn't be parked in anyway. Okay, thank you.
And I, you, just to clarify, you were asking about how much we're losing or just what kind of, how many a car that we would be losing? Is that what you're asking?
Thank you, Counsel.
I'm not an expert in traffic, so.
I now understand it.
Yeah.
There's already no parking for some period of space there, and we're talking about 10 additional feet.
Yes.
Sorry, I now understand it. Thank you.
I, I think that for clarification, and it's been requested before, that we really do need to have, um, graphics for these, um, no parking. We really do need to have the maps. And I did talk to IT tonight, and, um, I'm going to explore what's the easiest way to get it either off of Google Maps or off Map Geo. Google Maps may be the easiest way going through our own.
Or GIS would be.
Whatever, but I, but we really do need maps to accompany these. And I think that we may have to at some point make them mandatory because.
I wouldn't have asked that question if I had known, but thank you.
Yeah, all right. Um, questions from the counselors? Nope, we're all set. I am now gonna close the public hearing. And we'll get the committee report.
On a motion by Counselor Majota, seconded by Counselor Grace, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270, Parking Prohibited at All Times, by adding Pine Street on Northerly Side from a point beginning at its intersection with Washington Street in an easterly direction for a distance of 90 feet and ISO move.
Okay.
And I would also like to add that this was vetted by the Traffic Commission, and they did find a favorable finding for this to happen. Thank you, Counsel Benson.
Motion's been made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. Counselor Gilman?
I'll be supporting this, absolutely. And Margaret, thank you for being here to the end of the night. And, oh, Martha, I'm sorry. But you did a great job presenting your case and to Counselor Benson and the Traffic Commission, but it makes a lot of sense, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha, and thank you all for willing to put this forward and supporting it. You know, not a, I'm not, this, yeah, traffic is interesting, and this stuff is... But anyway, yes, thank you, and thank you for sticking all night long. So I appreciate it.
We haven't voted yet.
Move the question, please.
You might be a little premature, we haven't voted yet.
You don't know how it's gonna go.
We're over with the comments, no, we're done with questions.
I want to, yeah, I just want to say thank you to Martha for advocating for your neighborhood, and obviously Counsel Benson for moving this forward on behalf of the neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you, Martha. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Ready for number two?
On a motion by Counselor Grace, seconded by Counselor Majota, the Ordinance Administration Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend GCO Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-291, Towaway Zone by adding Pine Street on a Northerly Side from a point beginning in its intersection with Washington Street in an easterly direction by, for a distance of 90 feet and ISO move.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Nolan, seconded by Counselor Majota. Discussion. Seeing none? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Counselors, request to the mayor.
Okay. So Counselor Dylan, you're up.
It's Counselor Dylan, you know, I love traffic, I love traffic and stuff. But anyway, thank you. I just want to just thank the DPW and the administration for putting forward repairs to the playground at the park. Thank you very much. And it's at the Fort Park, so, thank you.
Counselor Grace?
I don't have much tonight, except thank you to my fellow Counselor Nolan for assisting me in a neighborhood meeting this past Saturday. I was so very grateful for his presence and his help, thank you.
Counselor Gilman?
At all of your stations, we have our proclamation for National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Counselors Worthley, Gross, Grace, and I attended on behalf of the city council. And we wanted you to all have it. And you note that in addition to my Celtic screen tonight, because we are missing the raising of the banner tonight, but it's opening night, but I also want to be proud that I'm wearing the purple flag. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
Counselor Grow?
I don't have anything on my own, but I would ask the administration put an effort towards resolving the issue of the handrails at Dorothy Talbot Rink. It's been, we've communicated, a number of counselors have communicated concern about this being resolved, and I realize there's some issues, but we need to, we need to get on this.
Counselor Majota?
I'd just like to, you know, say anything, it's Counselor Grow's more information if we can get this done for the people who use the rink. And other than that, no other requests to the mayor.
Counselor Memard? Counselor Nolan?
I'd like to thank the administration, all the volunteers, for a wonderful Halloween festival at Stage 4 Park this weekend. The atmosphere was perfect, the amount of people that showed, the volunteers worked tirelessly, it looks beautiful, and you couldn't have asked for better weather.
Counselor Worthley?
Yes, the only thing, first, I want to thank Counselor Gilman for drawing attention to the Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation and the whole month of October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I'm proud to have been at the very first one 24 years ago, and I've missed a couple, but it was a great ceremony. And Counselor Grace and Gross were also there, and the mayor's office did a fantastic job with that. We are 45% of the way through our term, and I think oftentimes when people get into the next year, they think, whether they're running for reelection or not, there's so many things you want to do. I encourage my colleagues to submit changes they want to see while we still have time. And with that, I'd also like to request that the mayor consider doing a budget, probably the next month or two, a budget presentation to give us a little orientation towards where we are, where we're going, what to expect, because that'll be here before we move on. So that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. And I will, I've sent the mayor my request via email, and I guess that's it.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Gross, seconded by...
Whoever.
Counselor Gilman. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, nine to zero.